All right, guys.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this week's town hall on Wednesday. For those of you that may notice, or even if you don't, I have indeed changed my background from the recall poster to the grizzly bill of California. And Tim, thank you for that fantastic video you put together. It is interesting how history changes. It stays the same, right? For those of you that don't know, and I looked this up tonight, the grizzly bear on here, the last grizzly bear in Southern California was October 26, 1916. So the grizzly bear has gone extinct in California and is actually in danger of being vanishing entirely, kind of like what's happening in California with the one-party rule. If we're not careful, the opposition that we have to new ideas and new things, which reality is, are kind of a lot of the same problems we see over and over again are going to, our opposition will be crushed. We're not going to let that happen. Interestingly enough, when you talk about water, about three years before the glass grizzly bear was, shall we say, put at peace in Los Angeles, 1913, we constructed the aqueduct down to Los Angeles. And when we did that, there was a lot of political rankering about that that's gone on to this day. I think what's important to note to my last statement is there's not a lot of yin and yang back and forth now, as our guest tonight will attest to, because we have one-party rule. But I want to start off with a couple of words of inspiration here, because we, the people, even though the recall wasn't victorious, it was a victory to get it on the ballot. We are continuing to fight. And we're going to talk later in the show about rebuild California, about what we're doing, about what we have to do about water. But a couple of quotes for you that Orin and I, and I think most people on this call live by Zig Ziglar. Getting knocked down in life is a given. Getting up and moving forward is a choice. And that's the choice that we're doing in rebuild California. We can make the choice, say, eh, we lost, too bad, you know, I'm moving to Utah. I'm not. My favorite one, though, is by Muhammad Ali, who's one of my favorite athletes when I was a wee lad, who said, "You don't lose if you don't get knocked down, you lose if you stay down." And again, there have been battles about water and other things happening in California for over 100 years and way beyond that. But it's important to note that unlike the grizzly bear in California, we, the people, will not go extinct. Orin?
I appreciate that. And, you know, as we go forward, folks, you know, we transitioned out of the recall and we're into phase two, phase three, phase four. Going forward, we're focusing on the 2022 election cycle. We're focusing ahead on the 2024 election cycle. And some of the things that that we're moving forward are helping to champion certain public initiatives that are important to the people. It's clear that, you know, the government officials down at Sacramento have turned a deaf ear and a blind eye to the needs of the people. And although I don't want to make climate change, extreme weather, or global warming a topic of this discussion, the fact is, if what they say is true, then those in charge, the elected officials at the Capitol, have failed to protect us against the coming storm, against, you know, we need flood protection, we need, you know, improved water delivery and services. So, you know, as we go forward, it's up to us to make the change we want to see in our state. And the people have the power within ourselves. We are a self-governing people. This is the original, you know, the foundation this nation was built upon, was a government of the people, by the people, for the people, as, you know, the 16th President of the United States coined in the Gettysburg Address. You know, we are a self-governing people. So we elect representatives or people who are supposed to represent us. But in a lot of ways, when you have that single-party supermajority rule, they lose sight of that. And they feel that they're acting with impunity, with a mandate to push their agendas forward, because they were duly elected to their positions, so they have, you know, all the authority and power to do at-will what they wish. But fact is, we still have problems here at home that we need to solve. And if they're not going to do it for us, then we need to do it ourselves. And like I, my, the, you know, the ethics my parents instilled in me was basically, if you want something done right, you have to do it yourself. So that's where we come in, Mike. Devin, thank you for joining us. Glad to have you here tonight. You're working on some important things. And, you know, it's wonderful to have an elected official in office who is willing to work with the people and champion, you know, some of the needs of the growing population that we have. You know, fact is, we're not meeting the needs of the population we have, the agricultural community or the growing population. We haven't done anything in California for decades to improve our water supply and infrastructure. So thank you for joining us. And give us a little rundown on, give us a peek under the tent, Devin. What are you working on?
Well, Orin, Mike, Tim, great video, by the way. Thank you for having me on. So let me, let me give you a little history. I've been in office seven years now. And when I first took office, my hometown is the city of Porterville. And a lot of you go back to that point, and Porterville was the epicenter of the last drought. And frankly, it still is. And we've done a lot of work. We still have hundreds of residents whose wells are going out. They don't have water. They don't have clean potable water. And there's 101 issues. But I've gone through the legislative process over and over and over. We've done grant loan programs for wells. We've done 101 different things. But what it really comes down to is the simple fact that you both have already stated, our state infrastructure wasn't built for the population we have today. And we hear this all the time. And, you know, the simple fact is this infrastructure was built based on a population of 10 million people. Well, we know today we're at 40 million. So, well, we lost a few, but we're still pretty close to that. So, you know, earlier we mentioned, you know, the canals and the canal system and how great that system is. And some of those pictures showed how the subsidence has messed things up. Let's put that in perspective. Currently today, the subsidence problem for our conveyance system, what it amounts to is that we are losing, I'll say that again, losing 60% capacity in certain areas. So I know a lot of us out there, we want to build dams, we want to do these things. But unless you can move that water, you've got a problem. And we saw that in some of the videos. So one of those first things you got to do is fix the conveyance system. So we've all taken 101 stabs at this. A lot of us look back, you know, we passed Prop 1, the water bomb. And everybody was really excited. It was like, we're finally going to do something. And you see today, even the site reservoir is being held up. And that's an issue. You know, a lot of us thought Chempers is going to get built. That didn't happen. So what I started looking at is back in 2008, or not 2008, sorry, 2018, we looked at doing another water bond. And that bond didn't quite make it. And after that, me and my team started working on what ended up being born in state legislation is ACA III. And what an ACA is, is when an assembly member or, well, ACA for the assembly side, is where an assembly member says, hey, I want to put this on the ballot. And you run it through the legislative process. So we did this, and part of it was looking at, well, how much money do we need every year to fund everything under the state water portfolio? I'm talking storage, I'm talking conveyance, I'm talking groundwater recharge to help prevent subsidence. I'm talking about clean water cleanup, things that can fix, you know, all the way down to, you know, the LA basin and the water quality issues there. How do you fix lead pipe problems that we still have in some of our schools today? You know, they don't want to talk about it, because nobody likes California to be referred to as Flint, Michigan, but we still have these problems. I still have schools in my district where the answer for decades has been they just ship them bottled water. And that's not a solution. And so as we saw in the video with the prior governor's job task force, you know, what's the price tag on this thing, right? This is the big thing that we run into. And when we were looking at it, LAO numbers and all these things came out. And it ended up being, and my question to them was, what percentage of the general fund do we need to allocate for water? And it came out, the number we had talked over the phone was 1.96% of the state general fund. And I got this idea looking at other problems. What was that?
There is a little echo going on. Somebody has some feedback. So if everybody can mute their phones, that'd be good.
So anyway, looking at that and looking at mechanisms that work, we know our education funds, Prop 98, guarantees that percentage for schools. And we looked at the funding mechanism, how that became constitutional, how that's protected. And nobody can take that funding away from our education. So looking at that, I went, why aren't we doing that for water? Waters, you know, we can talk all day about how water is the most essential thing for life. So put it together, introduce it as ACA III. I had, and this is a bipartisan effort. When we introduced it, we had Eduardo Garcia out of the Salt and Sea Coachella Valley area. We had Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio out of LA, Assemblymember Rudy Solis, my neighbor to the west, Assemblymember James Gallagher up there, Yuba area. We had Senators Borges, Chang, and Wilt, you know, members from all across the state were interested in. The problem that we ran into is the simple fact that we're outnumbered in Sacramento. And this came up into the debate of, well, what, what exact percentage? Show us all the numbers, show us all these things. You know, why 2%? Well, in policy side, you know, when you're like, okay, 1.96 versus 2, that what it really comes down to is the marketing of a ballot initiative. If you ran a ballot initiative that said 1.96%, people are going to get confused. People are going to ask a lot more questions. There's a reason why, and I picked the 2% is looking back at the dairy industry. There's a reason why you don't buy 1.96% milk or 1% milk or 3% milk. You buy 2% milk. Dairy industry has already figured out the marketing on it, and it's pretty close to the number. And when you really start breaking down how bad of a problem this truly is, 2% is just scratching the surface of what we need to get started. And so we ran this, it got held up, been working on it in different ways, and knowing in my heart that we need to run this as a ballot initiative. And so what happened this year is Christie Deener from California Water for Food and Ag gave me a call and said some folks were interested in working on this deal. And I said, well, what's, what's going on? And she goes, well, they want to do another water bond. And I said, absolutely. We are not doing another water bond. We've done water bonds. There's not an appetite for water bonds. Nobody wants to do a water bond. Don't waste my time. So Christie Deener introduced me to Edward Ring. And I've known Edward from a few different things, from the California Policy Center. And we started talking. And I said, look, here's ACA III, here's a blueprint. This is where we need to start. And this was back in the spring. And what came of this was we reached out to all the top water folks from across the state. Everybody from the big attorneys behind D-SAL and Poseidon guys to California Farm Bureau attorneys, to different ag attorneys, water engineering attorneys. We even reached out to the California Building and Trades Unions, who we all know hold the contract on sites. And I said, hey, look, I'm not asking you for your support yet, but I want to make sure the language is sympathetic for you guys.
So Devin, let me break in real quick, just for the listening audience. You've referenced it a couple of times. It's Site Reservoir. And, you know, there, people may not understand the history regarding what you're referring to as sites. But there is an effort underway. There's an area that's been identified as a potential, you know, reservoir, storage area for water. And that's the Site Reservoir, and it's held up. And it, but it's not, it, tell me, does it have funding?
It has partial funding.
Partial funding? What is, let's just address that real quick. What is the roadblock for Site Reservoir?
It's, I mean, that's the real question, that none of us can seem to get an answer to. Even talking to partners with the building and trades industry, you know, they're like, it's a regulatory matter. And so one of the things we're doing with this ballot initiative, and if you want to look it up, the ballot initiative is called the Water Infrastructure Funding Act of 2022. For more information, the website currently is morewaternow.com.
Morewaternow.com.
Correct. Actually, I can do a quick little Google thing here and pop it up and paste the link in there.
Where is Site Reservoir location in our state? Is that, that's up in the Central Valley, right?
No, Sites is north of the Delta.
Yep.
So that's catching more water coming down into the Delta, down past Shasta as that moves down the Sacramento River area.
Sure. Good, clean, clear water.
Well, I mean, it's, Orin, the biggest thing here, and what we've really done is, you know, a lot of times when we look at these things, we're looking at, okay, what are the needs of agriculture? What are the needs of this? And with my district, I've learned very deeply that the biggest problem is this equity issue with water. My district is, you know, massive little county island communities of immigrant farm workers who just don't have water. They have horrible quality of water. And trying to get the state to help, this is like pulling teeth or squeezing, you know, blood from a turnip and all those things. And it's extremely frustrating. Because they like to say, and we've seen these budgets, oh, there's, there's, you know, billions of dollars for this. Well, the money's not actually going there. And it's being held up in the regulatory side. Part of what we looked at with the Water Infrastructure Funding Act is how do we tighten up the Water Commission, Coastal Commission, you know, you can't do away with them. You have to have a process. You know, even if Republicans took over the mega majority, you'd still need a process to make sure there wasn't abuse of power. And I look forward to those days, hopefully in my lifetime. But you've got to make sure there's still a process, but at the same time, you got to make sure they can't drag their feet on that process. And so
It's, it sounds like it's just a pure charismatic nightmare. Well, and but what you're, what you're doing is you're doing an end run around the bureaucracy and doing what you can to bring it to the people. And that's, that's what, you know, our country is founded on. And that's what we're all about is, you know, we need to be, we need to participate in the solutions and, and fix these problems that face us and not rely on other people to, to fix them for us.
Well, and let me, let me share, I want to be clear, because there's people from all over the state on this. And I won't name drop everybody, but I'll just give you some of the different key stakeholders that are on the steering committee, where they come from. We have the Chairman of the Business Federation of the Central Valley. We have the President of California for Water, for Food and People Movement. We have the Vice President of the Mesa Water District, General Manager, East Orange County Water District, myself, Edward Ring, California Policy Center, President of Orange County Water District. We have the Director of Regulatory Economic Affairs for the California Milk Producers Council. And we have one of the Board of Directors for California Farm Water Coalition, who are all taking part of this. And that's just a few, you know, and as I said earlier, you know, we, I sat down and I asked the Farm Bureau, I said, hey, I need your attorneys to look at this. And, you know, I want to make sure this is good for agriculture, if there's anything in here. You know, and people are always skeptical, especially when you're trying to start something from the grassroots and build up. You know, they're like, well, how much money are you asking for? And it's like, right now, I'm not asking you for money. I want to make sure this language works for you and the people that you represent. And that's where we started. That's the conversation we had with the building unions. You know, and it's a conversation you have to have across the board. And, you know, and one of the other things that we have to think about too, with the state of California, is we have this enormous housing goal. You know, and we ask people, you know, what are the top issues? And it's always, you know, homelessness and public safety and water infrastructure, these types of things. And when you ask people, well, how do you solve homelessness? And they say, well, you need to build affordable housing. Well, the biggest problem with affordable housing right now is housing projects are getting turned down left and right because there's not enough water. You know, and it just blows my mind that here, we love to brag, we're the fifth largest economy in the world. And we are. The California Republic is a nation-state with a fifth largest economy in the world. And frankly, I had better water conditions on my deployments in Iraq.
You know, Devin, what strikes me is really interesting and scary. I mean, everybody's familiar with the Maslow hierarchy of needs, right? Where love is the last one. And love's a good thing. But food, clothing, shelter are the top three. You kind of need them to survive, right? Food, water, it kind of run together.
Air is up in there somewhere.
Well, air, air, I think you didn't include it in the hierarchy of needs. Maybe you didn't think about it. But really, think, think about this. So the, that's kind of government's job, sorry, not you specifically, to supply food and water. Then it gets a little bit funny and weirder. Shelter, we have 160,000 homeless people that we can't build houses for or more people because we don't have water. But good news is, this week Gavin did sign the garment bill, eliminating the per piece for the garment workers. So I guess he's now attacking clothing to make sure he didn't miss anything. I think the reality is, is that we have too much of the one-sided government, like we started the show, kind of not doing the basic job. Like, God loved the grizzly bear, but if it came between us and the grizzly, I think we need to kind of sort of take, it just amazes me that here we are in 2021, having this conversation about water. We kind of knew we needed
Mike, you're not, Mike, you're not the only one.
And that's the biggest issue here is when, when we look at data up and down the state, everybody talks about water. And it's in one way, shape, or another. It's either we need more storage, we need to fix, we need D-SAL, or we have a saltwater intrusion problem on the coast. You have subsidence issue. You have water quality issues. You know, when it comes to water, there's an entire portfolio of water problems in the state. And the problem is, is there's not a mechanism in there that says, look, here's the money. You're going to do it, and you're going to go and fix it. It's debatable, because I mean, it's politics, everything's debatable. But, you know, people can argue the color of my tie is a different shade of wood. Knock yourself out. But that's reality. But the other reality is, we have a responsibility, I believe, as elected leaders, as other leaders, is community people, of people of, you know, whatever faith background you come from, as good Samaritans, as people of the community, to stand up and say, hang on a minute, this isn't getting done. And I don't care who you are, where you come from. You know, I'm a poor Okie kid from Porterville, California. You know, I've been dirt poor. I've hit rock bottom multiple times in my life, and I've climbed all the way back up to here. But water is essential. You're absolutely right. Maslow's hierarchy needs absolutely dead on. But we have to, and again, this is not a partisan issue. This is a people issue. This is a fact that it doesn't matter where you come from or who you are. You need water. You know, my issue, I got kids that can't brush their teeth, can't flush the toilet. And that's a fact, and it's been ongoing. And we've been fighting and fighting and fighting. And I've been beating my head against the wall, trying to run it through the normal process of legislation. And one of the beautiful things about the state of California, about our republic, is that we have the ballot initiative process.
Right.
And Mike, if I could chime in here real quick, going back, going back to something that you had said earlier, Devin, is, you know, this, this is a nonpartisan issue. This is something that relates to everybody across the entire political spectrum. It doesn't matter what walk of life you come from. Everybody enjoys a good, clean, clear glass of water. It's, it's a, you know, the essence of life. And, you know, it's something that we can all relate to, and we need to, we need to find these issues. And we need to come together and find these solutions, you know, across the board. And there are no solutions where you have such a division in our state government right now or our national government. But we have to, you know, put things aside and start to focus on, you know, these issues at hand where we all have a vested interest in the future of our state and our own well-being here in California.
Oh, absolutely. You know, I'll be honest with you. I think too many of us get caught up on watching the national news, whether it's Fox or CNN or whatever. And we're so focused on what's happening in the DC swamp, and we're losing our minds over it. And we're forgetting these issues. And water is, it's a small issue, but it's the biggest issue in the state. And we lose sight of what's right in front of us.
I think we lose sight of too the fact that water and food, and that's why I was trying to put them in there, and people forget that, right? We view water as something that I drink, but the reality is probably not much food without water, I'm thinking. I'm not a farmer.
But Mike, let's, let's get into some simple physics here. You know, we talk about water for food, but water is also fiber. It's the clothes you're wearing. You know, a lot of people heard, you know, younger generation guys, and I got kids, I heard about this with the new Xbox. Well, there's a microchip shortage. You need water to produce microchips. You need water to produce everything. Every manufacturing plant uses water. You hear these, these conversations about, well, it's going to cost electricity. We're going to have to use all this electricity to do water. Well, you can't produce electricity without water unless you're doing solar. You know, but that's, it's fact. And, you know, it's, I see somebody noted here on cotton, you know, my, my family, my great-grandparents, I'm the last cotton ranch in the city of Porterville, turning into a Target parking lot. There's, there's some hometown roots for you. But it's, here's the simple thing, guys. Go, go on to the More Water For Now, hop on, follow the conversation. Go to Christie Deener's got a great website, or I should say Facebook with the California Water for Food and People Movement. And follow along, get involved. I mean, that's, that's the biggest thing I can ask. Get involved. If you sit on any water district, a city council, county board of supervisors, anything, even a Rotary group. County Board of Supervisors, anything, even a Rotary Group. Say, hey, we want to do a deal that says we're gonna support this. We are gonna support the Water Infrastructure Funding Act in twenty twenty two. And that's that's my biggest ask right now. We obviously have to raise funding, so when we get this back, we can go out and get signatures collected. You all are are pros at that, and I appreciate your willingness to to help out with this initiative. But we gotta go get signatures. You know, this is in the the final language has been turned into. The AG's office and everything else, so. We should get this back, hopefully end of October, early November, and start hitting the ground, collecting signatures. In the meantime, we gotta build support and we gotta raise money, and it's that simple.
It is absolutely that simple, and it's critical. It this this is critical infrastructure. This is something, so Devon and I, you and I had a conversation, and like I said, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds about. Climate change and and extreme weather and global warming and all that stuff, but. Fact is, folks. If what they say is true. Then they have failed to protect us against the coming floods and against the. You know, the the looming droughts that we have. California already has. You know, an unstable environment weather wise. We experienced long periods of dry spells. We experienced heavy waterfall and rain. And the most money that we've spent in this state. For our water infrastructure was to fix a broken dam. That was built improperly. And that was the Oroville Dam. And I'll tell you what, I was in charge of our marine or our, you know, search and rescue. At the time, that thing was failing. And it was, it was really a concern because. There is a lot of communities that laid in the path of that wave if it were to have crumbled, and it was close. But the thing is, we haven't done enough to fix. The problems we have. And you talked about the pipes at the, in the LA Unified School District area, and, you know, the the. Poisoned water that are in those pipes, and they bring bottled water in, so the kids have something to drink. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so, you know, there's a lot of ground that we have to make up. You know, we have to repair what we have. And then we have to forecast for the future. We have to meet the. Demand, the supply has to meet the demand. Of a growing population and and expanding agricultural community. And, you know, although we're paving over our agricultural land on in target parking lots, like you said. You know, it's still an expanding community, and we have to meet the needs because. We are the breadbasket for the country, if not the world. We feed, you know, people far and beyond our own borders. But, you know, the agriculture. Use of water is critical to our survival. And if the elected officials aren't going to take the proper action to get. It done what we need, then we're the ones that have to take the action to make sure that it happens.
And let me stress a couple of things for specific action right now. As everybody knows, the way California is structured, the bulk of the voting population lives on asphalt. Moi, as an example, and I've lived on acreage before. Christie Diner's group, Food and Water Movement, is probably under suppression by Facebook. So a mission for all of you, and with the site Devon just handed out, get it out everywhere. There's kind of a myth, sorry. And that like, wow, the people in agriculture know all about water, and we don't need to care, right? And then when these things come along, people see that they cost.
Look at this link I just put. This is LA Unified.
Yep.
School District.
Well, well aware of it. I.
Yep. But see, here here's the problem with the school side of this. The state of California expects a school district to pass a local school bond to address these types of problems. That is the expectation of the bureaucrats in California. So if your school district has a water problem, they expect you to go pass a school bond. Which is gonna cost the the people in your area more and more money, more taxes. We're in we we can, believe me, I know we can dive into the.
Yeah, it's a whole rabbit hole, my friend, because Kabina, they have tons of separate districts. Go ahead.
Well, let's hear what he has to say, Mike.
It's. We're already paying taxes. This two percent is the taxes you're already paying. And this is saying, this money is gonna go back. We're gonna fix your schools. We're gonna fix the canal system. We're gonna get you fresh water. You know, when we talk about drought in California too, I think the other big thing, and I say it on a big international ag board. With with all the US states and the Canadian provinces, and we talk act. The drought isn't just a California problem. The the drought is a Western Region, United States problem. You know, we we forget about little things like we're in danger of having the Colorado River water shut off. From coming to us. We we don't think about that. We we think it's a guarantee. You know, we don't talk about the fact that the Hoover Dam. That produces. Pounds of electricity to the area. We're already having brownouts and rolling blackouts and. You know, don't turn on your lights at certain parts, don't wash your clothes at certain times of the day. What happens if next year this drought continues and Hoover Dam goes out? What are we looking at? You know, and and I'm not trying to play the doom and gloom card here, I'm just keeping it real. You know, these are, these are real things that are happening. And we have the ability for for a simple two percent. And I know two percent doesn't sound like a lot. A lot of people, hey, is that even enough? Two percent of this year's budget is just under four billion, with a B, four billion dollars.
And you know, we don't realize.
This isn't, folks, this isn't one time money. This is ongoing, year after year after year. Until we reach our goals. So when we hear, like, we were talking about the the sites and and or think for the background on it. We hear, oh, we're running out of money for the project. Well, with this, you're not gonna run out of money. With this, you're gonna tighten up the bureaucrat regulators and actually force them to move the ball.
And we have so much, we, like I said, we could talk about six hours, like what's going on with the Salt and Sea and the Metropolitan Water District. Arguing Imperial Valley, because it's the Salt and Sea, and he's, look, I went to the Salt and Sea as a kid, but it's producing dust.
This is water for the Salt and Sea.
Right, no, I get it.
This very specifically, because I, like, I I've been working in the state legislature for seven years. Specifically water because of my district. And I know my members' concerns, whether they're Republican members or Democrat members across the state. Because I've talked to these guys for seven years. You know, and what we made sure in here, there's two parts of this that cover the clean drinking water. There's parts of this that can cover LA River Restoration, Saltwater Sea Restoration. All those restoration projects we want to do are covered in this. On top of the ability to do dams and conveyance and recharge and D cell and other things, because anybody. And 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 I'll leave with this. Anybody that knows anything about water in California knows it's not a one size fits all. They know there's a north and south, there's an east and west. And you have to have a diversified portfolio to be able to do this. You may not be a D cell fan. That's cool. But you know what? D cell is a factor in SoCal. This is a statewide initiative. So we have to look at the factors of what everybody statewide needs, and that's what we.
Devon, I I'd like them, I I'd like to see them put some D cell plants in San Francisco. And the peninsula. And tear down the the Osha Shaughnessy Dam. And restore the Hetch Hetchy Reservoir back to its former glory. But we won't get into that right now. They are drinking the best, cleanest, clear water this planet has to offer. And if anybody wants to look up what I'm talking about, it's the Hetch Hetchy Reservoir. It's a twin valley to Yosemite. And it it's, you know, we all know that Yosemite is one of the wonders of the world. And I think that Hetch Hetchy needs to be returned to the people it belongs to, and that's not just us here, America, but. The world to to enjoy its glory. But that being said.
We can, we can talk, you know, you want to talk to the San Francisco Bay area issues, they have a saltwater intrusion problem.
Yes, they do.
And how are they gonna pay for that? They have no idea.
We we need, we need this bill, or not this bill, but this initiative. That you're moving forward. I look, we look forward to working with you as we go ahead. We have a, like, I've said, you know, we have a vast network of volunteers. We're all united towards the same cause, and that's to to fix the things that we need fixed in California, to rebuild California. And to steer it in the right direction as we go forward.
Well, Mike, sorry, back to you. My Mike, Tim, I I just want to thank you guys and and thank Rebuild California for your interest. In this initiative, you know, this isn't, this might have been something I I dreamt up at the end of twenty eighteen, but. This is, this is our initiative as the people of California. And and again, it doesn't matter who you are, where you come from. This is what we need to do as a state, so we can actually be. The economy we all deserve to be.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And thank you so much for taking time out of your day to join us, Devon. It's it's always a pleasure, my friend. And personally, I look forward to working with you in the future as we go forward. I feel like I have a new friend in the world, and thank you so much.
Or you need all the friends you can get. Devon, thank you very much.
Absolutely, you guys take care. Tim, thanks for handling all the technical side, man.
Thanks, Devon.
All right, you guys take care.
Thanks. You know, or or it was interesting today when I talked to Carla at Politico, when I was on the other call, I had to dive off. And she was talking about, and she's not as much of a Gavin fan as you would think, right? Because in being in the Yang, and she was talking about.
We don't want to put words in Carla's mouth.
No, 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 I just said. Okay, but my point was Gavin's running around. Talking about, and I was direct quote to Carla, these are my words. You know, no one does a press conference better than Gavin. He gets the Emmy for press conferences. For announcements which don't follow through. But back to what we're talking about tonight, it just doesn't meet Gavin's expectations in his really big house. Trying to get his bus through to Washington to talk about water. But that really should be in his agenda, because of Devon's point tonight. We can't solve any problems if we don't have this basic need. And she asked me. Why rebuild California, which Orin is gonna announce, or I'll announce it for you. We got our official PAC number today, our license plate, right? To move things forward, you know, the state goes, ah, official, we gave you a number, which they've done before. And because of that number, for everybody out there, again, what we're saying is, start driving these issues early. This is the most basic and important one. Christie was, shall we say, venting today on Facebook, she's been. Using the Twitter term shadow ban, right? We need to take, go into these groups and not just ask to join them. But get them out across other groups we have on social media, like Twitter, Instagram, et cetera. As we make this transformation from recall to rebuild. The website that Devon is talking about today, I have a secret weapon. I don't want anybody to tell anybody. It's called cut and paste. And when you can take that link and cut and paste it, you can deposit it throughout the internet. And that will bring awareness. This is something even as before this initiative goes out for signatures. As money is trying to be raised, so we can go out into that base, give awareness to it. I'm very serious what I'm saying here. LA has a lot of votes when they vote, if they vote. They've also got a lot of asphalt. And the average person in Los Angeles worried about crime and homelessness doesn't think about this. We need to get them to think about this. It's like power. You only think about it when it's not there. It's critical to our existence, without being too dramatic. As a planet for the human race. I really don't give a damn why water's been misallocated. It's been going on a long time. But action you can take. Whoever's watching this tonight on our various feeds. Go to the website, go to the water movement, start doing your own research.
Hold on, get the website out. Let's give it out. Go to morewaternow.com. Is that right, Devon?
That's correct. I've already put it in here in the chat.
I saw that. Morewaternow.com.
Donate here is, will take you to it, and once you're there, you can go around and look at all the great things we built into this.
Tell everybody listening that the people that are operating go at the morewaternow.com. Movement, along with Devon, are good stewards of your money. It's not gonna be misspent. It's not gonna go to. You know, the deep pockets of the consultants and and the the thieves down in Sacramento. This is gonna go directly to signature gathering up and down the state. And Mike and I are not formally, you know, integrated with the system yet, but we look forward to working. Toward that as we go into the future, yes.
Morewaternow.com. The Food and Water Group. If you remember nothing else, remember water, because we're running out. It's misallocated. We need it, okay?
There you go.
The basic job of government has been failing us again. We keep pushing, rebuildCalifornia.com. Will be up and running fairly soon. We got our PAC number today. Answered Carla's question today with the same kind of thing. She goes, why are you guys continuing? What's your thing? Our objective is to keep this mobilization of people. Who want government, President Club excluded, of course, to do their job. To get out there and provide us with the basics. Maslow's hierarchy of needs. We need food, we need water, we need clothing, we need shelter. We can't have it without this. God bless us, California. Or anything you want to add before we sign off?
RebuildCalifornia.com, coming to a community near you soon.
RebuildCalifornia.com, we're all Californians. Drink up and good night.
Good night, Devon. Thank you.